July 25, 2022. I hope everybody is on. Let me just see if everybody's here. Okay. All right. There we go. So pursuant to Government Code Section 54593E, members of the Daly City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream on the city's YouTube channel at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot YouTube dot com backslash Daly City Video Meetings or on the city's agenda website at WWW dot Daly City dot org backslash agendas or on local channel 27 on Comcast. Okay. All right. So I'd like to go ahead and start with a pledge. Yeah. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. The city clerk, can we conduct a roll call, please?
Mr. Buendtura.
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manala.
Present. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note, I am having some technical difficulties, I think, with my internet access, so I won't be able to be on camera today, but just wanted to let you know.
That's totally fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Manala.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. We'll have one presentation from the Peninsula Clean Energy on updates. We have Mark Hirschman, from the Director of Government Affairs from PCE. So, Mark, go right ahead and on your presentation. And we have Jan Pepper as well. Mark or Jan, welcome to the meeting. Do you have share screen capabilities? Yeah. Let's see. Stephen, do you have control of that?
I do. Actually, I think Leilani does.
Okay.
He has access, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Leilani. Thank you, Stephen. So.
I think we need to tell them that they're both muted. I don't know if they can.
That's true. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So Mark and Jan, you're both muted, so.
Okay, sorry, I'm trying to find the slide deck and I'm not getting. I'm sorry for the delay. We're having problems here.
Not a problem. I think it's been that type of day with tech issues.
Let's see, maybe I have the right one now. Let me see. Okay, I think I've got it now. I'm sorry for the delay. Are you ready?
Yes, we are ready.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Let me just get it in the right. Okay. Into slideshow mode. Oh, wrong. Okay. Okay, can you see it? Great.
Yes, we can. Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much for your patience. It's nice to see all of you. Some of you I know. Glenn, nice to see you, council member. And of course, Mayor, you're on our board. Anyway, I'm Jan Pepper. I'm the CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy. And thank you so much for inviting us to your council meeting today. So I'll just quickly give you an update on what we're doing at Peninsula Clean Energy and then happy to answer any questions. So we are your community choice energy program. We are not-for-profit public agency. We started in 2016 and each council in San Mateo County has voted unanimously in 2016 to be a part of Peninsula Clean Energy. And everyone has a seat on the board and the Board of Supervisors has two seats on the board. So the way it works is that we generate the electricity from clean sources and then PG&E delivers that over their lines and then you have savings. And we'll get into that in a moment. Ninety-seven percent of the people in Daly City are Peninsula Clean Energy customers. When you voted to be a part of Peninsula Clean Energy, everyone was automatically part of the program. People had the option to opt out and stay with PG&E, but ninety-seven percent of the customers stayed with us, which is wonderful. And so we offer two products. Our default product, we call Eco Plus. And this is the product that everyone was automatically enrolled in. It's 50% renewable and 100% clean. And the rates have been 5% below PG&E's equivalent rates since we started. And because of that, San Mateo County customers overall have saved $100 million over the last five years by being Peninsula Clean Energy customers. And then the upgrade choice is Eco 100, which is 100% renewable. And for a residential customer, it's about $4 more per month to be 100% renewable. So in Daly City, because of that 5% discount last year, or in 2020, your customers saved $1.3 million by being Peninsula Clean Energy customers. And so if we were to extrapolate that out over the last five years, it's probably close to $6 million of savings for Daly City customers overall, which goes into your pockets rather than into PG&E's pockets. And you have reduced greenhouse gas emissions from electricity by 96% compared to 2016 because we're delivering a cleaner electricity product to you. And you and Daly City have been recognized by the EPA Green Power Community as a green power partner because of your participation in Peninsula Clean Energy. So where do we get our electricity? It's 50% renewable, 100% clean. So from renewable sources, we have solar, wind, geothermal and small hydropower. And the photo on the left is the Wright Solar Project, which is a 200-megawatt solar project that was built solely for Peninsula Clean Energy customers. We get all of the output from that solar system. And it's one of the biggest solar systems that is serving a CCA exclusively. And then we also have wind power. I think this is a project in the Altamont Pass, this picture. And then the clean power is from large hydro projects. And we have a goal to be 100% renewable on a 24/7 basis by 2025. So right now, when we say we're 50% renewable, that's on an annual basis, but we want to track that hour by hour so that we're not relying at all on any natural gas for any hour of the day for our customers. So we'll be telling you more about that over time. And Mayor Dasmagwill has been hearing about it when he comes to our meetings. So we're very excited about that goal. So the other thing that we do is we're partnering with all of you to be 100% GHD-free, meaning electrifying other things, including buildings and transportation and using distributed resources. So I'll talk about this in a little here shortly here. So if we look at the community-wide emissions for the county, in 2019, the greenhouse gas emissions from transportation made up about 50% of the greenhouse gas emissions. So that's why we're focusing on transportation to get people to not be burning fossil fuels in their vehicles. And the other part is from buildings. So that's the other big contributor. And the methane from buildings is from burning natural gas for heating, for cooking, for water heating and things like that. So we're helping to provide options for people to not have to burn fossil fuels for those types of uses. So we have been working with all of our jurisdictions to adopt reach codes. So as you know, as council members, every three years, you adopt new building codes that the state puts out. So reach codes are building codes that reach beyond even what the state is proposing. And in Daly City, you adopted reach codes which were to work with for new construction, to encourage or require all-electric for certain types of uses, whether it's water heating or space heating. And we partnered with the cities to provide technical assistance in the model codes. And each jurisdiction adapted it for their own use. And we'll be working with you again this year as you adopt the 2023 building codes. And so the next step is to look at existing buildings. How do we get our existing buildings greenhouse gas-free too? It's easier to do it when it's new construction because you can build that in. How do we now transition existing buildings? And then we have other programs to support the community and provide incentives. We provide, we have a big program for electric vehicle chargers. We're investing $28 million to install 3,500 electric vehicle chargers by 2024. And we put in 16 million of that. The state, through the California Energy Commission, matched 12 million of that. So we're in the midst of that program right now. We also provide incentives for income-qualified folks to get used electric vehicles. Right now, we're providing a $6,000 incentive for someone to move to a used electric vehicle if they qualify income-wise. And otherwise, we also have an incentive of $1,000 just for for anyone, no matter what their income, to get into a used electric vehicle. We also have a program for electric bicycles where we're providing incentive money to get people into e-bikes and hopefully they use those e-bikes in place of their vehicle. We also have a program to add battery storage to solar systems on people's homes and to also encourage those who don't yet have solar to put solar plus battery storage on their homes. And we have a $1,000 rebate for electric, to put an electric water heater in, in place of your gas-water heater. And that is also matched by another $1,000 from Bayron. So you get a $2,000 incentive to switch to an electric water heater, basically a heat pump water heater. So there's more about this on our website, PenCleanEnergy.com, community programs. We also partner with the schools. You know, getting to the students is really important because the students then talk to their parents and say, Mom, Dad, why aren't we doing this? So we have been working with students and teachers from the Jefferson Union High School District. We have a program with the students called Youth Climate Ambassadors. So the students participate in this program. They come up with a capstone project that they do that's related to environmental issues. And it's a wonderful program. And so more than 100 students have participated in that program from your school district. And then we also have a program for teachers in the summertime to develop an energy curriculum. And two of those teachers from your district participated in that in 2021. We also work with the community college to provide opportunities for them to be interns and learn more about clean energy. So there's a couple of things that are happening in Daly City specifically. For our EV-ready program, which is the EV charging program, we have two multifamily projects that are installing electric vehicle charging stations. And then we also have a program where we're piloting a new technology developed by a company called Harvest Thermal, where they have combined both the space heating and the water heating into one heat pump system, which should ultimately be more efficient and less expensive. And in fact, we had an event at that home a couple of weeks ago. So we'll be piloting that. There's four homes that are participating, one of which is in Daly City. We'll be collecting data and looking at how that's performing over the next year. And then, of course, we have, a number of you are involved with our board. The mayor is on our board right now. Vice Mayor Buendtura is an alternate. Councilmember Sylvester used to be on our board, so we know a lot of you. And we appreciate your work, especially the mayor is helping us with a special DEAI project that we're working on, diversity, equity, accessibility and inclusion. And so we really appreciate the extra time he has invested in making sure that we really think through what we're doing and put together a great program for our organization. And then also, you all are providing a great model for the rest of the Bay Area with the school district workforce housing that you built. And not only did you provide housing for teachers, which is so urgently needed, you built an all-electric building for those teachers. So congratulations to you for being so forward-thinking and to actually make it happen. It's great. And we were happy to be able to give you the all-electric award for that building. So that's kind of an overview of what we're doing right now. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And of course, you're always welcome to come to our board meetings on the fourth Thursday of every month. So thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you, Jan, for presenting on PCE. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to some of my colleagues for comments or questions. So councilmember Glenn Sylvester, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Jan, I see you smiling already. It was many moons ago that I was part of PCE. And I really learned a lot during that time. We were in its infancy stages. And we were making ends meet. But what I appreciate about you, and from what I recall, there was something called solar farms. And as I sat through that meeting and I said to myself, why are we going so far out? Why are we looking for all this extra land? And, you know, it's come to fruition. We acquire. And the foresight you had was, I remember, okay, well, this one will come on board in 2021 and this one will come on board in 2023. And that type of foresight thinking is what made I feel PCE what it is today. I thank you so much for that and I really learned a lot. Now, what I've liked about, also about PCE, is the issue of the rebates. And I think we spoke about that when I was on your board and was wondering why a particular manufacturer was basically not invited. But I got my answer. But I'm hoping in the future sustainability to go electric is becoming all the more apparent. And it's definitely so. As a matter of fact, I support electric sustainability. And I pass the word on to my family. And as a result, we have seven EVs in our family. And it's looking pretty good, especially with the gas prices going up. And now I just shake my head and they say, hmm, you were right there. You were right. So that's the thing I wanted to put out there. I liked your rebate. When I first saw the rebate on those who are lower income, that shows me that you were thinking about those folks as well. Because EVs are pretty much expensive, but to offer a mechanism that they can obtain a rebate of some sort. You talked about infrastructure, charging infrastructure, to which I'm a big proponent of. In all my dealings on council, I ask, are you putting in EV chargers? And basically, it sounds big, but all you say, all I'm saying is 240-volt access for level-two charging. So I think that's very important and offering. You made mention of getting additional charging stations. And if you don't already know, but I'm sure you already do, President Biden has come up with a plan to allocate $7.5 billion to help folks put in additional charging infrastructure. And I know one of the biggest fans I am of a particular automobile software maker, starting with the letter T, who has one of the biggest in the United States and throughout the world. They have even applied to get some of this grant money. And in addition, have opened up their chargers to some European countries. So I can go on and on because I appreciate what PCE has done. Your Board of Directors, everybody brings something to the table. And I noticed some have expertise in certain areas. And stuff was just over my head in some areas. And but, you know, your meetings were very long, but they were very productive. And it's there today. And I'll now be looking for battery storage. I already have solar. And my bills run about $40 a month. And so I think I'm doing my share for clean energy. So it would not have been if it wasn't for PCE and what I've learned, the whys of sustainable energy. So thank you, Jan. And I'm so happy to see you again. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. It's so nice to see you, even if you're just this box on my computer. But I really enjoyed the time that we worked together. And I'm glad to see that you're still helping the city of Daly City. It's great. So thank you for your very kind words. I appreciate that. And thank you for all you did for us while you were on the board.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. We have Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Hi, Ms. Pepper. Great to see who you are in person. I've heard great things about you from our mayor as well when he gives the reports. I remember when Supervisor Dave Pine, I wasn't even on the council then, when it was at, all this was at the beginning, all this from the beginning. It was incredible. And the steps of where it has become and the leadership and it very much, I would say, the push, it was very environmentally focused. It was ahead of its time. I remember attending the meetings with Supervisor Pine because indeed, the vision was there. And it was the coming together of the partners in our San Mateo County, which I'm very proud of. I know you are as well. And I see Mark Hirschman here. And at the time, I think he was with Senator Jerry Hill. So having great elected leaders in place, Kevin Mullin and everyone that really supported this clean energy ahead of its time. And now I see fruition has happened. The growth is there. And now the capabilities are all there. I'm on the commute.org and CCAG. And so a lot of relatable with the environment. And I always hear about the great work because some of your board members, obviously, are on some of those boards as well. So we get to hear the great stories and our mayor gives great reports. Very humble that our Daly City residents have benefited, our city has benefited. And we're just moving in the right direction and taking the right steps with the guidance of the board and looking forward to the great things you have and making things affordable. Like you, I think Councilmember Sylvester was speaking of, that people can afford an electric car, right? Because in the beginning, it was all, everyone, it was a great idea, but how could you do that and you don't get a rebate? And then some of the rebates had so many stipulations. And I see how along the way, it's become more equitable. And I think that the mayor is working on a lot of that as well. And with pricing and all levels and accessibility. And I think that's fantastic. So kudos to Rick Benio, who I know, and a lot of the other people on your board. And great work. I look forward to. I know the board can just expand and our climate is so, as you know, the mariposa fires and what it's become. And when you see your bills, especially during this inflation, knowing that something was created to help you save money. That little bit of money may not seem much to a lot of people, but especially now, you really appreciate what Peninsula Clean Energy really has done for those of middle-income, lower-income that in their pockets when they get their electricity bill. And it actually is making for safer for our wildfires as well. So we really appreciate that. Well, so thank everyone for the work. And Mr. Hirschman, who I know really well, I believe he's online as well. And to the whole board. And thank you, Mayor, as well, and Mr. Sylvester for having served. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you for your kind words. We really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Justin Manala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Pepper, and the amazing update. I think it's so wonderful that Mayor Dr. Rod Dasmagwell, you're on the board and also working on the diversity and inclusion aspect of ensuring that lens is within also the Peninsula Clean Energy Board. You know, we know that renewable energy is necessary as we move away from fossil fuel. And it's amazing how you have all these different types of programs looking at ways to move away from that. One question I have is, what is the mechanism that you use to share the amazing rebates to households and residents? And also, what's the best way for anyone to subscribe or get on your list? Is it a newsletter or Instagram? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions and your comments. We send out an energy programs bulletin to everyone that we have an email for to let them know about all of the programs that we have. And I think we have maybe 180,000 customers on that email list to provide them with that information. We also partner with other community-based organizations to do outreach to folks who might be interested. And with this work in the DEAI space, we're looking at other ways to make sure that we can reach people because not everyone is computer literate. Not everyone knows how to do that. You know, some people use the phone. Some people use paper and pencil still. So we're making sure that we are making our programs accessible to everyone and available to everyone, no matter how they communicate. We send things out in the mail. We do, we use lots of different ways of communicating. We do use social media to let people know about things as well. I, for one, don't use social media, so I would never see something on Facebook or whatever. So we try to cover every possible aspect of how people might communicate. And we also try to make sure that we provide information in different languages. So not just English, but also Spanish and Chinese.
That's really wonderful to hear that there's also, you provide the resources. That that's really wonderful to hear that um there's also um you provide the resources um and information in different languages. Um as yeah, San Mateo County is pretty diverse. So uh it's wonderful that you're looking at ways to provide that type of outreach to the community. And um just wonderful work. It's it's great to see the update. And um I love to see the data points. That was really wonderful to see um how much of our residents are uh being impacted by this, these types of programs. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Oh, I think I have Vice Mayor Ray Vinajar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Jan, I just wanted to tell you that um Mr. Mayor, um he, I don't know if you've been able to watch our council meetings, but the mayor has not skipped a beat when he uh routinely reports on what has happened with Peninsula Clean Energy. I mean, he is so enthusiastic about the work that you guys do. And he is uh just um, I mean eager to share the progress you've made, the issues you're tackling and uh just basically always doesn't, he just doesn't miss a beat in giving us the updates. So that's why we are always fully informed. And I think that's probably his favorite committee. So I think you'll probably see him for a very long time. So he, I wanted to let you know that you are very well represented. Um and and we are very keen on what you're doing. Thanks to the mayor's work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yes, we appreciate Rod's uh participation. And we appreciate you being the alternate if Rod can't make it. But um yeah, he's been super involved and thank you. We're, we're gonna keep you, keep you involved.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And again, I I share all the sentiments of my my colleagues. And Jan, thank you for um being there from day one since I got onto council and seeing the growth of where um where I've started and to where we're at. I think um I believe in in my heart that we are the standard when it comes to clean energy within our county and throughout the state. Um and I truly respect that in terms of what we're doing in terms of eliminating greenhouse gases, trying to engage the youth and all the different community programs. It's, these things are not gonna disappear overnight in terms of greenhouse gases, but these things take generational um steps. And that's what we're taking. And that's one thing that I really appreciate, being on the board and thanking you and the rest of the staff and my colleagues on the board and on PCE. Um thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your interest and for for your comments. Oftentimes, when we speak to a council, it's just, okay, thank you. But I really appreciate hearing from all of you and that you're all so engaged and interested in what we're doing. That that really means a lot to us. So thank you. Keep up your great work.
And I'll see you Thursday.
Yes, we will. We'll try not to have it go too long.
Right. Well, thank you, Jan, uh for coming through and
Sure, thank you.
And you'll see me again
Okay.
In a couple of days, few days. Okay, so moving along here. The approval minutes from our regular meeting of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, you had a motion in the second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, moving to the consent agenda. Can we get um a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there are items? Oh, my bad. Unless there are items um that want to be discussed or pulled?
Motion to approve on uh consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Um all those in favor say aye.
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 You. All right, moving to um a public hearing. So item number twelve, public hearing on abatement lien at four nine nine Santa Barbara Avenue, APN zero zero three dash one two one dash zero one zero. And I'll hand it over to um our staff, our city attorney, Rose Zimmerman, and our director, Tatum Mother said.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'll be presenting to you this evening. Uh this case involves a code enforcement action of the property located at four nine nine Santa Barbara. On September twenty-one of last year, the city obtained a preliminary injunction from the San Mateo County Court to abate a public nuisance located at this property. Pursuant to the court injunction, the city entered the property to abate a public nuisance of trash and debris. Staff obtained the services of Peninsula hauling and demolition and BK demolition in order to remove all existing debris in the front and rear of the dwelling of the exterior. Due to the severity of the public nuisance, city staff and contractors had to uh perform several cleanups at this site. On February fifteen of this year, the city sent the property owner a cost recovery bill in the amount of thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents with a detailed invoice of staff time and reimbursement for the services of Peninsula hauling services. As of the, as of today, the property owner has not uh submitted any payment to the city. And in accordance with the municipal code and government code, the city is authorized to seek recovery of costs by such special assessment lien to be placed on the property. Proper notice of the public hearing was published by the city clerk. A notice of intent to lien real property was mailed to the property owner. As of today, the property owner has not contacted the finance department or the city attorney's office in any effort to remit payment. Staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution authorizing the recordation of an abatement lien on the property located at four nine nine Santa Barbara to recover the costs that have been expended thus far. Um that concludes my presentation. So if there's any additional questions, um staff is available.
Right. Before we open up the public hearing, I open up to my colleagues. I see Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Go right ahead.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um Tatum, in sending out the notices, I believe uh that's in, what's the right word for the trust of some sort where the ones staying on the property may be mentally incapable? And subsequently, any decisions made is as a result of a um, I can't think of the right word, a trustee of some sort. Uh has that notice gone out to that particular trustee?
Uh are you like a conservatorship?
Uh, yes, that's the one. That's what they state them.
I'm gonna defer to uh the city attorney on that.
Yes, so the notices is for the property owner on the property. Um there is no notice of a conservatorship on the property uh as as the tenant. Uh so it went directly to the property ownership where this lien would be um essentially be recorded on.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues before we open up the public hearing?
Unless there are any comments, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we open it up to public hearing.
All right.
Oh, public comments.
Oh, yeah, mine. We have a motion to open up um the public hearing. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
For those members of the public who would like to comment on item number twelve, please use the raise hand feature. No hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Leilani.
Motion to close the public comment.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Can we get um and a a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call, please?
Uh Glenn Sylvester, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Can I get a second? I'll go ahead and second the motion to adopt the resolution by roll call. Miss City Clerk, if you can, please conduct a roll call vote.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. So motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Moving down to item number thirteen, communications, uh designation of voting delegate and alternate for League of California City's annual business meeting. And I'll hand it over to the staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I will take this one. Um this is an annual agenda item where the council is asked to um consider um designating a voting delegate as well as up to two alternates for the meeting. And um at the league conference, uh there is a business meeting where our voting delegates vote on resolutions. Um so the delegate must be registered to attend the conference. Uh not, they don't have to go to the full conference, but at least to the business portion of the meeting. So um tonight, we're just looking for two to three um people from council to be designated.
So Stephen, do we have to like nominate someone or can we just?
Um, that's a good question. I I think, well, first of all, you have to be registered for the conference. So that might narrow down the list a little bit. Um but yeah, I think nominations is probably the procedure. Um Rose, if if there's an alternate procedure, please let us know.
I think it's a designation, but uh make it fair, you can probably make a motion on the nominee and then vote on that.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna actually uh remove myself from consideration because I cannot attend due to work reasons.
Okay.
But I think traditionally, it's the mayor and the vice mayor. So I defer to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate the mayor. Can I do that? Is that procedurally correct, Mayor?
Yes, I think so. At least so, right.
Nominate on there?
Uh Glenn Sylvester, I'll second.
And I'll sec, I mean, I'll sec, I'll accept.
Okay.
Okay. And then um do we need a secondary?
So we have a, we have a a nomination, and this is mostly more a designation that we can probably approve by a roll call vote. So on the table, we just have the mayor as the designated delegate. And if you want to have that alternate as part of the resolution, so you can just vote on the resolution, you can designate an alternate as well.
Okay. And the um
Nominate, nominate um Councilwoman Justin Manalo.
Okay.
If she'd like to.
I'll second.
So why do we, we have a a vote for the delegate uh as part of the resolution for the mayor as a delegate and as the alternate council member, uh Justin Manalo. So why don't we have a motion to adopt that resolution and vote on the resolution?
Got you. Thank you, Rose.
Sure.
Uh can I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Or mayor will be the designated um delegate with um the alternate as council member Justin Manalo.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll gladly uh um make a motion that we approve that resolution. However, for point of order, uh Councilmember Manalo hasn't indicated that she would accept.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, um I through through you, I accept. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
And I second.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a first and a second. Miss City Clerk, if you can conduct the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay. Chugging along. So item number fourteen, the variance um V A R C dash six dash twenty-two dash one five seven five zero, parking variance to allow retail slash residential expansion at six one five seven Mission Street. And I'll hand it over to Michael.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a request for a parking variance from the owners of the building at sixty one fifty seven Mission Street. The parcel situated um on Mission Street uh at the end of Wilson Street. Yeah, the proposal is to expand an existing ground floor grocery store from a thousand seventy-one square feet to eleven uh hundred ninety-three square feet. Uh there are four parking spaces normally required, one parking space per three hundred feet. Also, the applicant is proposing to uh expand two better duplexes of the second and third floors uh that would receive five hundred square, five hundred and five square foot family room additions. So technically, no additional parking is required. But because structural alterations are proposed, a variance is requested from the city council. So this is a uh photograph of the subject building outlined in the yellow. And primarily, the uh the main thing that uh precludes the ability for the applicant to provide any parking. Of course, there's an existing grocery store at the first floor, but there's also a uh city crosswalk here that prevents any sort of a curb cut. So uh there there actually is no ability to provide additional parking. The buildings, uh the the proposal is actually to make the building somewhat similar to the size of the buildings uh on the uh east side of the structure, which are shown here, if you can see my pointer. So the proposal would bring the size of the building in parody with uh these buildings on the left. Uh these are just pictures of uh the residential uses that exist on Templeton behind the subject parcel. And these are floor plans showing the expansion of the existing floor plan of the grocery store, the expansion of it uh here. And again, uh no new parking uh requirement is uh triggered by this proposal. But again, because it's a structural alteration, a variance is required. And this is the new second floor, again, uh the existing on the left, proposed on the right. They're just making the unit more livable by adding a family room. There uh is no expansion of bedroom space. And then on the third floor, same thing, just expansion of um making a family room to make the units more livable. These are the site elevations showing that the building would look like after construction. Top existing, the bottom proposed, pretty much a continuation of the existing siding. The variance justification is no increased parking demand. Exist, existing, the existence of a pedestrian clock, truck, crosswalk makes provision of parking on the uh on the parcel not possible. Uh for the council's information, there is quite a bit of transit proximity. This parcel is afforded, both Samtrans and Muni are nearby, bus stops as well as city parking lots. And that's, that's all this graphic really is intended to show. Part of what allows us to grant the variance under California law is proximity to transit. So that's why we do provide this information. Projects exempt from CEQA. Uh findings are outlined in the staff report. I won't read these. There are four of them. And the planning commission and this uh city staff are recommending approval of variance. There are any questions, of course, we can answer them.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Um are there any questions, comments from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, um can we get a a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call vote?
Uh is this uh open to public comments, Mr. Mayor? If so, I'd like to make a motion that we uh open to public comments if any.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number fourteen, please use the raise hand feature. No hands, Mayor.
Thank you, Leilani.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Great, thank you. We have a first by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and I guess a second by, was it Councilmember Justin Manalo? Or, yeah. Um Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, you have a question?
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor. Um uh Mr. Longhausen, thank you for the updated information. I know that particular area and I can see by the property
I know that particular area, and I can see by the properties depicted on the screen, I see they do have parking and garages, but this one has a retail store. I know it's very, very difficult to park in that area, but what we're looking at here is to increase the quality of life and enjoyment for the property. So, you know, they've been doing, they've been making it this long, and I feel that we should not stand in the way. So, unless there are any other comments, I make a motion that we approve this variance. Thank you.
Right.
Second.
Okay, so there's a first and a second. Councilmember Justin Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With, with that second, I just wanted to say that, you know, given the business and its amenity to the community, it's, it's, you know, I think it's, it's important in, in that respect. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Giovanni?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment too, so the public knows that it does not, even though we have parking issues, this has nothing to do with any of the parking issues or will not make an impact. And if anything, it'll improve their quality of life. And, and I, I believe it always looks pretty aesthetic, and it's definitely a local thriving, access to groceries in our neighborhood. So, thank you for, and a small business, supporting small business. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember D. Giovanni, Ms. City Clerk, I believe there's a first and a second. Please conduct the roll call vote.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. The motion passes. Now, down to item number fifteen, approval of transfer of Franciscan Mobile Home Park to Franciscan Resident Advisory Committee. Approval of early redemption and deficence of Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency Mobile Home Park refunding revenue bonds. Franciscan Mobile Home Park Acquisition Project Series two thousand seven A, two thousand seven B, and two thousand seven C, and Mobile Home Park Four Tier Revenue Bond, Franciscan Mobile Home Park Acquisition Project Series two thousand two D, and approval of regulatory agreement. And I'll go ahead and pass it over to the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and members of the city council, that is a handful, Mayor, for, thank you for reciting the title. Before the council this evening, as well as the Housing Finance Development Agency, are the following actions to adopt the resolution. It is to approve the transfer of the Mobile Home Park to the Franciscan Advisory Committee, also known as the FRAC. This also includes the early redemption and defeasance of all of the outstanding Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency bonds, and will include the authorization to enter into a new regulatory agreement, which would be recorded onto the parcel for the low, very low income residents at the park. By way of background, there's a long history here with regards to the Franciscan Park. The city housing authority, the Daly City Finance Agency, did authorize and issue bonds and loan proceeds to the nonprofit corporations to finance the acquisition of the Mobile Home Park and provide housings for the very low income. In two thousand two, to assist the linked partnership, which is the original borrower at the park, in acquiring the park and make certain improvements at the park, they did issue the bonds, which were the A, B, C, and D bonds to enter into a regulatory agreement. The regulatory agreement had restrictive covenants that was recorded on the land to relate to tax exempt two thousand two bonds and require at least twenty percent or one hundred and one spaces to be occupied by the very low income residents. The covenants, existing covenants on the regulatory agreement are to run through two thousand thirty-two. In two thousand seven, the, the, the existing park did refinance and refund the bonds in accordance to a, an agreement. In connection to the transfer of the park to the FRAC, the city did receive a conversion impact report, which was delivered to the park residents and the mobile home owners in April and May of two thousand twenty-one. A transfer application was submitted to the city on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and supplemented with new information in two thousand twenty-two on, in May. The city staff did review the report and all of the relevant information, taking into account the conversion impact report, as well as the, and, and determined that the overall availability of the housing within the city to conclude that the transfer of the park would not result in any material shortage of housing opportunities or choices for low moderate income household within the city. The staff has concluded that the FRAC has satisfactorily verified the residents and mobile home park owners that have properly notified the application for the change of use in the park. Before you today in regards to the transfer of the park, in order to accomplish this with the FRAC and the bond defeasance, meaning retiring all of the bonds with the agency, certain actions on the part of the city and the agency need to occur with the funding of the Wells Fargo loan. In order for the two thousand bond and the two thousand two bonds to be defeats, no longer outstanding bonds shall be outstanding, and bonds are to be deposited in an escrow account. There will be bond counsel that will deliver an opinion to the agency, as well as the city, with regards to the bonds that will be defeats. And certain documents will be recorded, and also a new regulatory agreement will be entered to have restricted covenants on the property to have, for the very low income residents through the term from two thousand thirty-two, which is the existing to now extend to two thousand forty-seven. The action today by the city council is to adopt the resolutions to approve the transfer of the park and to, and to approve the defeasance and of all the outstanding bonds on the park. Following the defeasance, the city will no longer have tax exempt bonds on the outstanding for the agency, and the agency involvement with the park will be limited to only monitoring the compliance from the FRAC regarding the new regulatory agreement for the very, very low income spaces. The approval of this recommendation will retire all of the outstanding agency bonds. With regards to the staff today, the early redemption and defeasance of all the outstanding agency bonds and enters a new regulatory agreement, present before you are attorneys for the FRAC, as well as special counsel for the agency, Mary Ann Goodkind and Jeff Strickler. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Do we open this up to, yes, we open up to the, our, my colleagues, and I'd like to open up to Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Rose, thank you for the presentation, and I do have a question regarding the new regulatory agreement, which is currently to two thousand thirty-two, so that's ten years from now. And if we were to let this organization move forward for the new bond, you indicated fifteen years to two thousand forty-seven. Is that, my question is, is two thousand forty-seven, does that coincide with the amortization period of the new bond?
So, so, there will be no new bonds. This is going to be a private, private cooperative loan. And this is the, the covenants run through the life of the loan, which is two thousand forty-seven.
Ah, for the life of the loan, okay, so, let me see, this is now two thousand twenty-two. And you indicated two thousand forty-seven, so that makes it fifteen-year, or twenty-five-year loan, as what I can see at this particular time. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have at this time. And I'll provide a comment prior to taking a vote on this matter and hearing from the public if any comments. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Councilmember Justin Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Zimmerman, on this item. You know, I, I had the privilege with Councilmember Sylvester to be on the committee in regards to this item that's on the table this evening, with the extensive work that has been done for many, many years. It, it looks like they have found, you know, fin, financing in order to move through this cooperative. I think the Franciscan Park is, is really a special place in Daly City. We know that in regards to finding affordable housing opportunities, we need to be very, very, I would say, innovative. And this, you know, and I also believe in also the self-determination of the community. These members of the community have done the diligent work they've organized, and they've really worked with their community to put forth this proposal. And so, for me, I mean, that's what community building is all about, and also the aspect of it where, you know, there would be an opportunity to have people continue to be housed, especially those that are low and very low income. And for me, this is a long time coming. I think even for it to be on the agenda today, I think it's, it's a milestone. So, I see this as a benefit in, and in a way to be innovative and to have more opportunities for affordable housing or stabilization, I would say, in the community. And that's something I think is wonderful, and I think in, in respect to the organizers that have done the legwork. You know, this has been a process that didn't just come overnight. And for me, I, I see this as something extremely important. As I mentioned, you know, the Franciscan Park is a very unique and special place and community in the city of Daly City. I look forward to hearing more from, from them this evening. But I, I just want to say I am definitely, of course, leaning to supporting this endeavor and applaud the organizers and the community for pushing forth their self-determination and agency to be able to sustain themselves. And also, you know, looking forward to actually looking ahead to see how, as a cooperative, they maintain and are able to have that agency, and also the longevity of having affordable opportunities in our community. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one short comment, and then so the public can speak. And then after that, I might have a question, or I'll save my comments after the public hearing. Just knowing that this has been over fourteen years, but happy to see it on the agenda and look forward to hearing from the public, and I'll make my comments after we listen to the public respectfully. Thank you for, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from my colleagues? If not, I'd like to open up to the public for public comment.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll second your motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Leilani?
For those members of the public who wish to comment on this item, please click the raise hand feature to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have a total of six hands raised. The last called speaker will be FRAC, but we have seven now. Last called speaker will be Franciscan Park. When you hear a name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. And Mayor, we have one more hand raised after Franciscan Park, Mark Roy. Are you okay to go ahead and just allow? Wonderful. Okay, first called speaker, Piper Jen?
Can you hear me? Okay, I've been living here for the last twenty-five years in the park, and the majority of the park do not want the co-op. It's a power play for the whole park. They have these rules that are going to be ridiculous. They've been shoving this down our throats for over three years, harassing us, giving us inappropriate hand signals to those who are against them. Most of the residents are afraid to say anything because of the retaliation they may do. And there is a police report of a co-op member, FRAC member, taking the no co-op flyers out of the tubes. We are all so tired of them trying to take over the park. The FRAC is supposed to represent the whole five hundred and one homes here, but very few people are on their mailing list. And some of us just happened to find out about this meeting only an hour ago. Please stop them taking over now. We want the LLC to own the park, not these people who have no experience in running a park or any other type of business. It scares us totally. Please, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have David.
David McLaughlin, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Not sure if you, if I'm on video or not. I'm an attorney. I represent Franciscan LLC. And some of the comments I wanted to make include some of the ones I just heard about the notice to the, to the other homeowners. Councilmember Manalo, appreciate your comments, and I wholeheartedly agree that affordable housing is key, especially in the Bay Area. Franciscan Park has been affordable housing for a long time, and I think that the issue really is for it to continue to be a solid community and not deteriorating. I submitted something in writing today at three fifty-five by the deadline to the city clerk, which summarizes Franciscan's position, which is consistent to what I've heard already. There's a question about the exemption from the subdivision maps. There are issues about park infrastructure and environmental hazards. There's an issue about the conversion impact report, and the lack of disclosure to the prospective purchasers. I think that there's no certification of the homeowners, which I think the city should do to make sure that it's the homeowners and not just the tenants and the homeowners. I don't see how they get to the two-thirds vote. So, there are a number of issues here. With all due respect, the, the staff report is excellent. The resolutions are all well-written. The quality of the work is, is really good. The question is, I feel like we feel that there are things that are missing. Has the ground lease been assigned to FRAC? I don't know. I didn't think it would be, but I don't know. There is financing in place, I understand that. But the, the main issues are the exemptions and the hazards. Where is the business plan for the park going forward? How are they going to pay for the infrastructure? Where's the?
Two minutes.
Where's the map? Thank you for your, for providing the time to me.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Carlos.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you very much, and hello, and thank you. My name is Carlos Medell, and I reside at the Franciscan Mobile Home Park. I've been a resident for twenty-seven years and living at the Franciscan off and on since nineteen eighty-six. In nineteen ninety-one, my late partner, Richard DeVita, and I purchased a home and also volunteering and served as part of the homeowners' board. and also volunteering and served as part of the homeowners board as president and treasurer for nearly seven to eight years. During that time, we were investing or investigating to convert to a mobile home park to a resident ownership. We loved the Franciscan. It was affordable, clean, felt safe to live in and had and still have a great community. Through the years, we noticed a lot rents was increasing and changes of the amenities. Due to these lot rent increases, our seniors and other neighbors with fixed or limited incomes were affected and struggling, causing them to move. Richard had a dream that all these residents would be able to afford and stay here if we were responsible for our own decisions of the rent increases if needed and the upkeep of the amenities. Living at the Franciscan saved many people from being homeless due to the affordability. However, now again, we have folks here struggling to afford the rents. And also the amenities are slipping, in my opinion. As we hope to become a resident ownership of the park, I believe that we have an individual voice to help strategize and control the increases of the rents and the amenities, and also to be involved as to how things are handled. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Robert.
Hello? Am I on? Can, okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, hi, everybody. Good to see you again. My name is Pastor Bob DiSevio. And I had the privilege to meet you, I think it was back in April, representing Love Daly City. And but as a citizen of Daly City, my wife and I have been residents here at the Franciscan Park for thirty-one years. We have been very involved in connecting with the seniors in our park. But Franciscan Park is comprised of many seniors. And during the Love Daly City event back in April, hundreds of letters went out to our seniors thanking them, especially those at Dodger Center. And the friends and neighbors that I've spoken with at the Franciscan Park, they are really anxious about the future of our park under this proposed co-op. And many of them, including myself, just learned about this agenda, about the approval of transfer just today. So I'm going to say that many of the residents are not even aware that this meeting has taken place or the approval of transfer is even being brought up tonight. A lot of them are not aware because of the lack of communication by the group that wants to go forward with this approval of transfer. So lack of communication. Now, these seniors, council, these are longtime residents. The Franciscan Park is not real estate, but it is their home. But many of them are on fixed incomes. And so my question to Wells Fargo is, how do they expect the park to be repaid in the amount of years that was brought up tonight by the city council? I just don't know how that's going to happen. And so I would strongly recommend, just with a couple of seconds, for the council to hold off on the approval. I think that there's more areas that need to be discussed for the for the good of the seniors, but also the residents of the Franciscan Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Robert, it looks like you had fallen off earlier. Did you want to still speak? Okay, we'll move on. We have Franciscan Park next.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I there?
Oh, hi, Robert. Go ahead.
This is my second time on a Zoom call, sorry. Yeah, what I want to do is piggyback on what Bob said. There has been no mailers from Link Housing since last year. Nobody knows what's going on here. No notices from Daly City, no park-wide meeting with Frac in in years. There's been no park meeting. No. And the transfer of the park is going to be voted on tonight. I just found out this yesterday. The problem here, I'd guess, is sixty percent of the homeowners are elderly, low-income, disabled, and live on restricted incomes, collecting cans, plastics, just to make it through the month. The reason there is not more residents on this Zoom right now is they weren't notified about tonight. I think they were just trying to slip by us. What I really want to say is, on the conversion impact report admitted, submitted by Frac, the city is, it's inadequate because it provides no protections for those in the park who do not want to join Frac. At the very least, the city should require Frac to treat non-members the same as members. For years, Frac has waged a campaign of pressure and threats to those who don't want to join. So they, there are many in the park who are fearful fearful of retaliation if Frac is able to make take control. I just had to say my piece. I represent a lot of elderly homeowners.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Franciscan Park.
Evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, my name is Tian and I live in Franciscan Park for almost ten years with my family now. So in the room with me right now today in the Zoom call, we have fifteen three persons residents in Franciscan Park behind me right now. And in the past ten years, we all fought all fighting for this. And in this home, mostly Chinese and English is not our first language. Even if all those discomforts, we still fighting for it, a place we call home. And mostly we're low income. You can see that in the Daly City, we don't have that much option right now. And also in the part, in all those past years, we can see how poor the management here in San Francisco Park. And also, as a minority group here, because language problem, we always abused by the management company. I also have another neighbor here next to me. He also want to say something. I'll pass the mic to her, to him. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Charles Long. So can I hear you? Hello, can I hear you?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Charles. I live in Franciscan Park with my wife. I have lived in the park for over ten years. So I believe myself and those with me, I'm commenting in support of the city's staff recommendation to approve the repayment of the bonds on the park and to approve the transfer, the application, which will allow the park to convert a resident on the community operated as a limited equity housing cooperative. So we ask you to support this recommendation because approval will provide democratic ownership and control, ensure the continuous stewardship of the park property under the professional management company. We thought it would help the service, improve the cash flow and long-term financial viability. Ensure the preservation of the affordable housing stopped in the community. Allow the residents to achieve what they the overall meaning. Wanted to support it in a park while election on October of twenty twenty. End of the long history of the litigation related to the park. On the payment of the bonds, reduce the city's administrative burden regarding compliance. Allow the long-term affordable features to be built into the park through the structure of the cooperative ownership. Model and the city's new regulatory agreement. Not cost replacement of a existing residence. So allow the refinance of the park, debt by our lender, who has performed extended financial and underwriting to the diligence, which along with ongoing monitoring, will ensure that the park preserves fiscal integrity and remains well maintained for current and future residents.
Your two minutes have been reached.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Frac. Next speaker, Frac. You can press star six to unmute.
Can you hear?
We can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me now? My name is Bob Quinn. And I live here at the Franciscan Park. And I just wanted to thank everybody for their support and hope we can get a yes vote from the council. We've worked for fifteen years on this. We've had numerous meetings. We've put out all the information required to comply with every request for information. And yes, we have a lot of people up here that have bought us. That's not our fault. A lot of people did not get full disclosure from the manager or from the people they bought their mobile home from. Again, that is not our fault. We've tried repeatedly to educate everybody here. And we have the majority of the residents who want this co-op very much. So Pedro, I'd like to have the president of Frac speak for one minute.
My name is so Pedro Gonzalez. I am the president of the board director for Frac. I just want to be very short and indicated that Jocelyn Manolo, I think she, in a very short summary, said everything about Frac. We have been fighting for this project for over twenty years. We have put a lot of time and effort. And our desire to do this transfer is to provide affordable houses for everyone at the Franciscan. We want to make sure affordable houses remain vital and alive in Daly City. The Franciscan is a little island in the Bay Area that provides a lot of affordable housing for a lot of people. And we ask you to support this effort. Your support will help a lot of people at the Franciscan. It will provide affordable houses for thousands and thousands of residents of Daly City. And that will provide not only affordable housing for us, but it will benefit Daly City as well overall. When you have residents that are able to afford their house, they're happy residents. They do a lot of good things for the community. And that's what the Franciscan is all about. Over twenty years, we have been
Two minutes have been reached.
I'm sorry. I just want to say the final thing. I hope all of you will approve what's in front of you. It will be a very, very good thing for all the residents at the Franciscan. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. We have last called speaker, Mark Roy. Mark, you can press star six to unmute if you're joining by phone. Mark Roy, can you hear us?
Yep, there we go.
Okay.
Okay, technical difficulties. Good evening. I would just like to say that my family's been a resident here for forty-three years, has seen a lot of good and bad. Yes, it's a beautiful park. We all love it and we all want it to move forward for our residents. I help a lot of the elderly around here. And the problem that I have with the co-op as an original co-op captain that I left after being a little appalled about the things I was seeing and hearing at early meetings. As of now, it there Frac has not released positive and solid information of the rents that non-members would be able to hold other than freezing members' rents. And at that point, a fifteen-year loan, it was said by the mayor. Right now, it was thought to have a thirty, I believe we actually have a forty-year total loan on this place. It just seems to me that a fifteen-year loan on the amount taken is going to put a lot of pressure. The infrastructure itself is in very poor condition. We're always having problems here. And it's not getting better. And Frac, we have yet to see any solid information and numbers and how they're going to be able to afford this costly repairs. We have residents right now, the park is something like sixty thousand dollars of residents that have been unable to pay their rent because of the recent situation and are having to figure out what they're going to do. Eviction notices, intent to collect, it's hard. But how is Frac going to be able to help these elderly, they claim, when if you're not a member, it was never made clear how they're going to protect them? This is a beautiful place and we all love it here, yes, both sides. But I'm not convinced from what they've produced or lack of that they can take care of this park the way it needs to be. Thank you for much your time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, we have two additional new hands raised after last called speaker.
Let's take those two additional and then we'll accept comments back on the council side.
Okay, we have a call-in user. Please press star six to unmute.
Yeah, so John Daly here. This is a no-brainer. It sounds to me like we need some translators on the city council side. Sounds to me like there's individuals that were unable to speak, perhaps because they're, perhaps because English might be a second language. I think all voices should be heard. No one should be muted. So I really think council needs, city, Daly, city of Daly City needs to have translators in Mandarin, Cantonese, I'm guessing, perhaps Spanish, perhaps other languages. But I think that's fair for everyone. So I think the vote should be postponed until everyone is heard.
Thank you for your comments. And last new hand, Mary Ann Mann.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak. I bought my home twenty-nine years ago after my husband passed. And it was unaffordable living outside of the Franciscan Park. So the park was ideal financially. And the resident participation at that time was a friendly atmosphere. It has since declined with the current management, which kind of resulted in me getting involved in trying to transfer the park to a co-op resident-owned park so that way we can own the land under the houses. We still have a lot of people that do not support this transfer. But unfortunately, they have not tried to participate in any of the functions. And it's been derogatory trying to get a developer to come in and purchase the land, which they can't do. So I just want to keep this going as far as affordable, because we cannot move anywhere else. We can't remove the homes and we need support for the low-income housing projects here. So it's important that we maintain and have the resident-owned property. So please consider the transfer so we can own and operate the park under proper management. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you, Leilani. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
I got a motion by councilmember Glenn Sylvester and a second I got a motion by councilmember Glenn Sylvester and a second by councilman Justin Manalo. I see a hand by councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion to close, I think we should take a vote.
Sorry. Yes, all those in favor say aye.
Rose was saying that.
No vote necessary.
Okay, got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to start off by letting councilmember Manalo know that it was indeed a pleasure to have your presence when we discussed this. So basically, what I'm doing now is reporting out. For those who did not hear councilmember Manalo's earlier comments, I say this. I have to concur with every point that she made in giving the report out. While I'm speaking, Rose Or Tatum, on the pro forma that we received, there were two amounts indicated as to the estimated rent based upon after the takeover. Can you look those up for me, and I'll ask that question in a moment? From what I've seen of Franciscan Park, I've been there quite often, and I've even attended at times where I see how the community comes together. And I'm speaking about Bob and Melanie, how they go out and distribute food to the seniors. And I'm very, very concerned because I know what limited income is. And folks there, as we've heard earlier, consist of mostly seniors. And I would assume that mostly these seniors have limited income, and thus, it's a decision they have every month, do I make my rent payment? And they have to forego many other things, necessities. So I'm concerned about that. And I have to give kudos to F R A C, because this process has been taken a long time. Rose Or Tatum, do you have those numbers for me?
So councilmember Sylvester, I'm looking at, but I am actually going to defer to Jeff Striper, who is a representative of the FRAC, who has actually provided us with the pro forma material and the documentation with regards to the rent. So Jeff, if you can address the council.
Yes, absolutely, City Attorney Zimmerman. Councilmembers, my name is Jeff Striper. I'm an attorney with the Franciscan Resident Advisory Committee. And Councilman Sylvester, you had a question about the rents and the pro forma, and I'm not exactly sure what you were thinking of, so help me orient.
Okay, I can, I can help you. Don't quote me on this, but I believe it was estimated that it was like twelve fifty a month, and under the new program, I think it would go down to eleven forty-nine a month, something like that. I'm not sure of the actual numbers, but I've read it in the pro forma.
Correct. So the pro forma, the very top line, has the average rent for the five hundred spaces across the top. And right now, in year one, after the transfer, the average rent would be twelve hundred and forty-five dollars per month. That is projected to go down over time with the cost savings from the reduced debt, from the reduced debt service and the increased cash flow. The FRAC is anticipating implementing rent reductions over a period of time, starting in year three is what the projections show.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Strifer. So that's one of the points that I read that I think would be beneficial in this project. The only problem that I have seen before in the past, actually, there's two of them. One is if a place may, for whatever reason, may have been a senior, or somehow they lost their place, their mobile home. And what I've observed is a brand-new mobile home is moved in to take that place, and subsequently, you can garner more rent. So, you know, I have no problems with garnering more rent, but I find that that's a problem, which leads me to point number two. In the time that I visited the Franciscan, as per the current regulatory agreement, there is supposed to be one hundred and one low-income designations. I have not seen a map to ensure that the Franciscan is maintaining the one hundred and one units. So I bring up the point, if a resident has lost his or her home and a brand-new one is put in its place, is it still affordable? Or is it that they are getting more rent? So the regulatory agreement, I think, needs to be enforced in the sense, where are all the low-income households? Now, the Franciscan is a great place, and obviously, there is going to be some changes. I just heard today that the federal government is thinking about raising the rates point seven-five basis points. So if this would have come before council a year ago, two years ago, we know that they would probably be in even a better position to refinance this bond. So those are my concerns, but with all that being said, I honestly feel this should have happened yesterday. So, you know, I'll hear from the rest of my colleagues, but that is my thoughts. And I thank, again, councilmember Jocelyn Manalo, because with her experience and reading all the information and coming together and making a decision so that we can report out today and provide all the information to our fellow colleagues. And I leave you with this. A confused mind always says no, but I am not confused in this particular situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, for your words. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, say in twenty years, I've been around this for, I would believe, fourteen years. So I know that, having been there as well, fourteen years, that's my personal experience of seeing these people, and many have passed on. That's the sad part. But we're here today, and we have an opportunity to make things. I know that anytime something's new, or you don't have enough information, or you don't have all the information when there's a change, but I do know that it has to change. Because the affordability factor, there is nowhere else. And the Franciscan has held on to that. People have tried to hold on. And as councilmember Sylvester alluded to, when he was speaking of seeing those big homes coming in, and it's even bigger than the lot, it's a little disturbing. Seeing the lack of management, seeing, which I think that that was a big, caused a lot of chaos. And then that in itself appears to be, you know, like the pointing of fingers, when all actuality, people are trying to do good. So, Mr. Strifer, I just have a quick question, please, if you don't mind. So when they were saying, because I know the FRAC is a co-op, and then under this, and I know that this is all new to some people, you know, just like anything else, you know, going to the co-op and having a transfer, and we all know that you'll be there, thankfully, and all this will go along. How does this affect all the residents? And in that, I think that that, how does that affect it? Like, will everyone be able to take advantage of having the lower rents? And then upon the transfer, obviously, I know that you and the group will continue to try to work with and educate, not educate, but, you know, get more information to as many residents as possible. And because it's an emotional issue, obviously, because when you lose your roof over your head, or you think you're going to lose your roof over your head, it's very stressful. And these people have been through quite a lot, as you know. So how does it affect the whole park?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, councilwoman Di Giovanni. So the whole principle behind the limited equity housing co-op is that everyone who is a member has a voice, and they have control over how their park is operated. There is a resident-member elected board of directors who is responsible for making the decisions. In order to become a member, there is a buy-in, an equity share payment that right now is set at twenty-five hundred dollars. And that amount is projected to remain affordable so that people can continue to join. I think that, you know, the long-term goal is obviously, you know, as many of the people in the park who are members as possible is beneficial. Everyone needs to have input and a say in how the park operates. That's the underlying structure of how a co-op works, is it's democratically owned and controlled. And so, you know, the goal of the Franciscan Resident Advisory Committee is to have as much participation from a membership perspective as possible. The conversion impact report really details how the conversion will affect people, and for the council's purposes here and the decision specifically about the change in use, the key is, is this conversion going to have an adverse impact on affordable housing in Daly City? And the answer to that question is no. It will not have an adverse impact. There will not be displacement, economic displacement or otherwise. There's no relocation that's required. Everyone who is a current resident is going to remain a current resident. We think that after conversion, and this has been a long time coming, as you've heard, there is quite the history. And there are some people who are on the fence about whether it's truly going to happen. And there is a vocal minority of people who have been sowing their own story about what the conversion should look like, and there have been private interests who have been trying to get their piece in here as well. But I think that as we get the Daly City approvals, there will be more residents who have currently said, you know, I don't know if this is really going to happen or not, who we're going to see, it's happening. And they will join. So I think, you know, the ultimate long-term goal is that that all of the residents in the park are going to have a stake and an ownership interest in seeing the park succeed. And they, because they control it, will have a motivation in their own self-interest not to raise rents any more than is necessary to ensure that the debt service on the park is paid, that there are prudent reserves, that the park is well-maintained, and the capital needs are addressed. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, and that's the reason I ask, because I mean, you explaining it tonight, I think hopefully will, and, you know, that will answer a lot of questions, you know, like for a lot of people out there that are the Franciscans. And is there, if someone cannot come up with a twenty-five hundred dollars at one time, is there like a fee schedule or?
There, there is.
Or seven seniors?
There's a payment option that, you know, has been extended to all eligible potential members. And membership of the Franciscan Resident Advisory Committee is all of the resident homeowners in the park, so anybody in the park who owns their home is eligible to join. A payment option has been offered where basically the resident picks what they can pay and when they can pay it. They sign a membership agreement and a promissory note that says that they will pay according to the terms that work for them. So that's, you know, that's been available to all of the eligible residents, all the members of the FRAC. And I think the intent is that, you know, that will continue until everyone has signed up.
Yeah, and so for me, I appreciate that, Mr. Strifer, to clarify in it for the members, and hopefully, a lot of people are listening right now to you, so that you can, maybe they didn't have a chance to even like hear some of what you said, so that now you explained it, and that I appreciate that, you know, for you taking the time. And this, this needs to stop, because the stress on the people at the Franciscan has not only affected them so much with their health and so much emotionally, physically, everything. Like I said, many have passed on sadly, and that it needs to stop. So we have an opportunity with FRAC to make this, inform this, which has become for the best interest, to make it so that people will be able to live there and not have to be evicted, and take it out of the hands of the mismanagement that we all know has occurred for, I don't know how many years, fourteen for me. And I cannot believe that these residents have gone through so much. It's just unconscionable, the things that they have gone through, and I'm sure you know as well. So, and we have an opportunity to try to preserve, protect, and maintain a quality of life for people that deserve it and have been fighting for it. And then it resonates, and to make things so people can thrive. And I think that that's the purpose of what they have been fighting for for years. And the culmination, like you said, after it unfolds, and for years to come, take it out of the hands of the mismanagement, take it out of the hands of the people that, those other people we all know, they didn't care about the people of the Franciscan. It wasn't in their best interest. They had self-interest. So now we have the people, the people care about it. They live there. So thank you, Mr. Strifer, and I want to thank everyone. And that, to see this on the agenda really is like overwhelming, because to think that you go up there, you go to the meetings, over the fourteen years, I have been with elected officials from prior, I have been as a person, and now I'm on the council, and here we are. So here we are. It's our opportunity to begin something for the people in our Daly City in a very special place, the Franciscan, which needs to stay affordable. So thank you, Mr. Strifer, and to everyone. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Are there any other comments, questions? Councilmember Justin Manal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I said some of my comments earlier, but one question that did arise was the amount of twenty-five hundred. It would be great to understand why particularly that number was created as basically the threshold to join.
I presume that was directed to me, so I will respond. The twenty-five hundred dollars is an equity buy-in. It's equity that a member puts into the, into the co-op in order to purchase an ownership share. That amount was chosen because there are a certain amount of startup costs that are initially incurred, legal fees, consulting fees, third-party reports, capital needs assessments, environmental assessments, seismic assessments that have to be done in order to line up the financing, in order to work through the regulatory process. And so some capital was necessary in order to get that ball rolling. The twenty-five hundred dollars was set as an amount that the FRAC members. the the FRAC members believed was within reach for people in the park, particularly with a payment plan of their choosing. And compared to other cooperatives, other housing cooperatives, um, it's actually quite low. There are other housing cooperatives in in the Bay Area in California who have uh, much higher equity buy-in for an ownership share. And so that was, that was the intent behind setting it at at twenty five hundred to raise some initial capital to keep the project going and to make sure it remained affordable.
Thank you, uh, very much for that, um, explanation. I think it's helpful, uh, for also others to understand why there's that initial cost, um, or just the the number in itself, um, in regards to kind of uh, being a a member of of the of the organization.
And one thing I could add, if if I could just interject as well, I apologize. It because it's an equity payment, if a member leaves the co-op, they get their equity back. The co-op buys that share back from them at the appreciated value so that if a member becomes a member and they decide they can't live in the park or don't want to live in the park anymore, and they leave, they are entitled to a return of the of their equity in the co-op when they leave.
Okay, I think, thank you very much. That's, I think, helpful as well as, uh, some knowledge on on in that respect. Um, yeah, I think, um, as mentioned earlier, I I made my comments, um, around, um, just ensuring that um, the park remains affordable and also, um, that it's the community that, um, you know, works together to, uh, be able to really, um, have the voice. Um, uh, and it it's a lot, it sounds like a lot of work has been put into this for many years. Um, and so, um, and it's also great to hear that there are are other models out there um, that you referred to, um, in regards to this, uh, co-op, uh, model. And so I think it's, it's been a long time coming and, um, hearing from, uh, the that the group that at this juncture, um, there's actually, um, I remember, um, the past meetings, uh, in which kind of the steps to create, uh, the transfer were necessary. And to hear that, um, the leadership and organizers were able to, um, find, uh, a financial, uh, institution, um, to back this up is is, um, I think, a a milestone to date because I know that, um, there were necessary steps to do so. Um, I would, um, actually ask Attorney Zimmerman, um, in regards to this, um, if he can provide, um, how long this, uh, has been kind of on in on your lap as far as the, um, you know, that this process to also give people an understanding of how how long it's been.
Oh, thank you, uh, Councilmember. I want to say it's been at least fifteen years, um, that this has been going on. It actually, uh, was even longer than that, uh, in terms of the residents wanting to have ownership and how to make that happen. So I know two twenty twelve is when, uh, there was litigation that stemmed from this. All of this would step, which resulted in a settlement, negotiations with all the parties. So at least from twenty twelve. And, uh, from when I started here, they've already had the issues of the Franciscan, and I've been here almost eighteen years. So it's probably at least fifteen years.
Thank you, uh, thank you, um, Attorney Zimmerman for that. Um, just, uh, even on the staff level, how much time and effort has been, uh, put into, um, you know, as well as our affordable housing staff as well. Um, Ms. O'Bell, so, um, thank you so much. Um, I think I've stated where where I'm at in regards to this issue. Um, I see it as definitely another vehicle, um, for us to, um, have sustainability, um, in these, um, homes that, um, have a lot of seniors and families in them. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, uh, Councilmember Pam Lee Di Giovanni.
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, in short, that I want to thank people that took the time to write all these letters and actually shared some of your personal stories. And I know that it what it takes and that the fact that you took the steps that you did and you shared your personal stories really, really ma- means a lot. And, um, and I'm happy to say that a lot of yous are still there. But again, this is also to honor those that have passed on, who are not able to be here today. But all the work that has been done has been done done in their honor. So thank you, thank you for that. Thank you very much. And thank you to all those that did so much work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pam Lee Di Giovanni. Um, are there any other questions, comments from my colleagues? Uh, Vice, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I just was going to follow up on what Rose said, which is how old this issue has been. When I first, I'm the oldest member of the council and I was on in two thousand and eleven, and this was right in front of me then. And so I'm just, I'm really glad that, um, we have made progress and that, um, I I'm I my I agree, I agree completely with, um, the way, uh, Councilmember Manalo sees it and what we need to do to move forward. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I like to have some concluding concluding remarks. Um, I just want to say thank you to those at the Franciscan that invited myself and Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. We had breakfast back in May and um, I want to thank the folks that were there that, you know, really provided a whole narrative of understanding the history of the Franciscan, why this co-op is important. Um, and to go along the lines with Councilmember Manalo in terms of talking about self-determination. Um, these things don't happen overnight. And and to reiterate what Councilmember Glenn Sylvester said, this should have happened yesterday, right? I totally agree. Um, we all know that affordability in the Bay Area, Daly City, is a struggle. And these are, there's not a silver bullet that will cure cure all affordability issues in living, but this is, this is like, this is a step. It may not be perfect, but I think that when we have these opportunities, opportunities in front of us, we we have to do, take advantage advantage of that. And so we have to be responsive to what's going on. We know that affordability and housing is is a huge is issue in the Bay Area, Bay Area and abroad. And so moving forward, you know, one of the key words in the cooperative is to be cooperative. And I know that, you know, it may not appease to everybody, but moving forward, I would urge the folks at the Franciscan to be cooperative with each other and moving forward. And this optimism of what can happen, right? And so with that, um, I would like to take a, um, a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Glenn Sylvester.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember the first and Councilmember Justin Manal over the second. Um, Miss City Clerk, if you can provide us with a roll call vote, please. Oh, yeah, but.
Mr. Boyne Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mrs. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. Okay. So thank you for all those that have been organizing through the decades and hopefully this is, um, one step to a larger goal. Um, and I want to thank everybody in this call. I want to thank all the the staff members um, that have been working with this and everybody in the Franciscan and hope we can move forward and to better, um, and optimistic, um, steps toward the future. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmembers and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Strifer, for attending. Okay, um, next up is public appearances and oral communications. I'm going to hand it over to Leilani.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear a name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. Any use of pervanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. It looks like we have two hands raised and last called speaker will be a caller by phone. First, we have Lindsay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and member, members of the council. Uh, my name is Lindsay and I am the the CEO of Warm Water Wellness, um, a nonprofit, uh, five oh one C three that we're a group of advocates, um, that have come together in response to the Mickelson Therapy Pool closure at Mills Health Center in San Mateo. Um, we had a fabulous rally yesterday. Supervisor Canapa, um, hosted a rally. We had over a hundred, um, patients, uh, former pool users attend. Um, a little background on this, about this facility is that, um, it was, uh, it was originally financed over twenty-five years ago with four million dollars of community donations, which is equivalent to seven point two million dollars. Um, excuse me, in today's, uh, in today's money. And Sutter, uh, is a nonprofit that has, that received eight hundred, over eight hundred and fifty million dollars, um, during the pandemic for the purposes, uh, through the CARES Act, for the purposes of not closing programs during the pandemic. We feel that this closure is egregious. Um, quite a few politicians showed up yesterday to speak. Um, Gina, uh, Vice Mayor Gina Pappin from Millbrae, um, San Carlos, Councilwoman Laura Palmer Lohan, members of the Peninsula Healthcare District. Um, we sent you an email, uh, with an introductory package and a some sample template several weeks ago, or perhaps a month ago. And I'm, I'm here tonight to follow up, to encourage you to please, um, agendize a resolution supporting our cause. We have, I think at this point, we have seven cities who have done so. We have four more coming up that have been, um, agendized. So fairly soon, we expect to have eleven city councils up and down the peninsula with resolutions. And this is, this is really a matter of urgency. We have, uh, we have people with with severe mobility impairments, pregnant women, children with special needs, um, for, you know, patients in recovery that all need this facility to be reopened. So please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. Again, my name's Lindsay and, um, I think you have my contact information. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have call by phone. Please press star six to unmute.
Hey, yeah, so John Daly here. Hey, you just missed NP. He had to go. He's had to take off. So, um, all of you need to be on mute. I keep getting all this background noise. Somebody's breathing online, so make sure you're on mute. Um, because when I'm talking, I'm really the most important attendee here, the public. So, um, Rod, I know that, you know, you looked those hands to the face and really know that you would never ever put a middle finger out there for us. So really want to appreciate that and definitely would call you out on that. Um, don't know what City Clerk's problem is. I actually commended Leilani last week. It's not on the minutes. I think I made that perfectly clear, but she does need to be recognized for her efforts. She calls out every single agenda item for comment. So, and she reads the announcement as well. Uh, Ray Ray, you know, I don't know what to say, man, you know, got to keep those fingers out of the nose, man. I mean, that's terrible. And I really wish you and Manalo would find, had signed off on that Jewish American Heritage Month proclamation. It doesn't make you look good. Whenever you present a proclamation, it must be executed, period. That's a total embarrassment, and it really makes you look like a racist. Uh, Sylvester, what can I say, man? Eating online, having the dishes being done afterwards, going up to the tenth floor of a building that should not be built, not worried about anybody else's view, just worried about yourself. You're extremely selfish. You guys, all of you, eating, all of you are really naive to the community. You're not reaching out. You're, I mean, you're ignorant. You're you're obtuse. I mean, this is absolutely incredible. Not even going to mention anything about, uh, I'll be, I don't know where she's at, but in it, Mr. Tonight. Uh, but yeah, definitely make sure that you guys redo the Daly City Bart thing. Nation one, what is it? What's it called? I forget what's what it's called. One nation is a, uh, it's a long night for me. Anyway, um, socially enough people, you guys need help. You really need help. You need to reach out.
Your two minutes have been reached.
Towards the community. Okay. Oh, by the way, if you ever drown in the river, I'll throw you a rope. I'll throw you both hands.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Leilani. Uh, moving forward, um, appointments. Are there any board commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think that there is, um, a hand, a hand raised. Is there a hand raised?
Oh. Leilani, do you see your hand raised? Um.
I do not see any additional hands, um, but you can use the raise hand feature if we did miss your hand.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any additional hands here.
All right, uh, um, I don't see any another additional hands up either. Um, I guess we can move forward. Yeah, okay. Um, let's see, move up. Appointments, um, would we have any board commission, membership committee appointments? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to reports, uh, council committee reports. So council committee meetings from July eleventh through July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. All right, seeing none. Move forward to city council reports. Are there any city council reports? Um, Vice Mayor Ray Buventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, um, thank you for presiding over the, um, Alice Bullos', um, Memorial Highway Ceremony, um, that we had. Um, it was, it was a really, really great thing for the city of Daly City to use. It was, um, well-attended. There were, um, it just, it was a good feeling to have something like that, something historic like that uh, happened in our city and to honor such a really great leader in the community. More appropriately for just the location, which was um, a highway that stretched from San Francisco all the way down to the peninsula, uh, where Alice Bullos clearly had an effect on in the entire peninsula and including San Francisco. Um, I thought the words that, um, you used, Mr. Mayor, was were very compelling and it captured the moment. And, um, I I just, uh, I couldn't say more about, um, I my my gratitude for, uh, the ci- the city, the staff, the community turning out and and doing like that for someone special. So that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and right back at you as well. Um, if it wasn't for your efforts, when I we've, when I first gone on to council, um, thank you for leading the way and and making the that, um, kita Alice Bulos Highway come from an idea and manifest itself into reality. And thank you for that. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on that same wavelength, thank you, Vice Mayor Benaventura, really for your leadership and for bringing this forth to Assemblymember Filting. And I will concur with you, Vice Mayor, on just the eloquent statement that Mayor Das Magwal had stated in regards to the Memorial Highway and how really historic that moment is in tribute to kita Alice Bulos. But really, just a huge reminder of the amazing work she's done for our community, but also a reflection of having an amazing Filipino-American represented and a tribute. Even one of my neighbors, who's not heavily involved in a lot of things, just happened to pass by. And because of her name Bulos, he was beaming with pride and said, "It was amazing to see that there." She said, "Oh, she's Filipino." And even from that moment, he was already just truly inspired from that. So thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mayor, for all that work.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Thank you. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yes, I know. And we want to praise our mayor. He took some great leadership in presenting that day and having everything together. And thank the Vice Mayor for, it was him that brought it forth for this woman, Alice Bulos, who actually, I mean, to make it to President Clinton, to appoint her is pretty, pretty impressive, but always remaining humble. And I do remember what Vice Mayor said. I remember he said, someone asked him why, something about, forgive me if I misquote you, but something about why not, why now, and why not before? And he eloquently spoke and said, "She wouldn't want it. She would not." And that that spoke volumes about the humbleness of who she was. But there's an impact that she had on so many people that it reverberated out in our community, throughout many cities, throughout many electeds, and some even with Gavin Newsom, Jean Mullin. She supported a lot of people, and she made sure she asked the right questions. She just was really, really one of a kind. And I really don't think, they say that people are replaceable, but in this case, I say not. I say not. And looking at the family, looking at the pride, looking at the reflection of who they are and the humbleness of Charles, Charity, and the rest of the family and the community that gathered, to really honor her. And I want to share this with my council, that you know how they have another sign on the opposite side of the highway, which I haven't had a chance to see yet? So my friend said, she turned her neck and just turned it like the thing. She said, "Oh, I gotta be careful because I'm gonna go off the road." Because she was so shocked and so to see the name, I guess it's reflective of what Councilwoman Justin Manalo said. It just kind of like stunned her, took her back for a minute and said, "Wow, wow." And thank to the Assemblymember Filting, he got it done. He did it with smooth. And I know that I'll comment after Councilmember Manalo. I know she wants to speak about the Jokoi of which she eloquently led that day as well. But I'll let her speak first on that incredible event as well and give her the preference of speaking first. And then I'll follow with comments about the Jokoi event. Thank you. I'll let her speak first through the mayor.
Councilmember Justin Manalo, all right.
Thank you, Mayor Das Magwal, and was going to raise my hand on this, but I really wanted to say amazing work through the Arts and Culture Commission and really Mayor Das Magwal as well, and First Lady Arlene Das Magwal and Joe Boston for really continuing to ensure that that because the film is in Daly City, that he comes to Daly City. And it was really amazing to see community come together. It was really beautiful. And I think what was really amazing from his talk, so after the movie, he went directly to it around how important it is to have representation and for his mother to see a reflection of himself. And that systemic racism is literally still alive, whether it is in areas of film or where it's in institutions. And it needs to be continuously faced. And that, I think that was, I mean, right off that, you know, of course, the film was about family, but to see him go into the panel and literally just say, you know, his struggles as a Filipino-American artist trying to make it was really, really, I thought, authentic. And it really, really brought also to the forefront the realities that people of color face in different industries. And so that was really something. And I was truly honored and humbled. I know, Mr. Mayor, you couldn't be there and Vice Mayor couldn't be there. I was truly humbled and honored to be able to pass on the key that you left him to the city. And so I think that a lot of folks will be beaming with pride as well because the references to Daly City, the Filipino culture, was, this has never, ever happened before. And so, yeah, it was, it was really, really beautiful. Oh, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yes, I too wanted to thank the mayor, because I know you were a big lead. Well, Arlene, amazing. Joe Boston, amazing. Leilani. And I understood that they'd been working on this for a while, and then it happened. And unfortunately, you couldn't be there to witness it, but the premiere of the movie the night before, and then that had so much meaning to it, and then the next day, to even like stand there and to be able to let him know. And when he told me that Steven Spielberg opened the door, it doesn't really surprise me because in Jewish faith and in Jewish culture, you do open the door for others. And when he was talking about keeping the door open, and of course, you know, he was joking about your key, saying that, you know, that he has the key and he's gonna make a keychain with it, but at the same time, that's important. Keep that door open. And he did refer to like most anyone, but he did describe his mother. And we had our local folks there, Ching and Joey from Westmore, and who are part of his team. And that's a lot to be proud of. So it seems like he, not only were we proud that he gave Daly City a lot of shout-outs or what have you and put us in the spotlight, but the meaning about the spirit, the Bahamian spirit, everything was translated in that movie, in Easter Sunday. And it had true, true meaning in it. So I like encourage people, I think it opens August fifth, to please go see it. And it doesn't really even matter your background, but definitely, of course, our community. But it's relatable on so many levels, so heartwarming. And go home and think about it. Think about family. Think about the culture and living life and celebrating life. Because the ones I know, that's what they do in your culture. They celebrate life. They live life. The lolos, the lolos, that's what they do. And they bring love and life to everything they do. So I'll make it short because I know it's getting late, but very humble. Thank you for the work. It's great to see the community that came out and bringing him back. He said, "Remember, you made a day for him, so he has to come back." July twenty-second, mark it on your calendar. You're gonna bring him back, right, Mayor? That's his day. So I'm looking forward to it and hopefully he can capture more while he's here and film here. That'd be great. So thank you very much. Very humble to be there. It was great.
Thank you. And to also reiterate on, I have a couple of things too, but before I talk about Jokoi, I just want to just report on the Mid Pen Wall Raising on July fourteenth. I was there with both Councilmember Justin Manalo and Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, as well as Supervisor Canapa and other dignitaries that were there as well. And it's just a start to a new beginning of, I think it's the largest affordable housing project in San Mateo County. So that's huge. We're getting through step one. And we're gonna see this community develop and thrive over the next decade or so, a couple of decades. So I just want to acknowledge that for both the special screening and for the kita city. Of course, I want to thank Jokoi for coming through and Universal for putting resources, money, capital, promotions behind a movie that's surrounded by the Filipino, Filipino, Philippine ex-American experience. Rarely do these things ever show light or put us in the center of discussion. And this is just the start. So I just want to thank Jokoi for taking that first step. But by all means, it's not the full representation of our experiences, but it is a necessary step. I also want to thank Leilani, Charlie, for just, and the staff, just for putting it down. We've been in talks about this, these events for the longest, I believe, like since January. So I want to thank also Jeremiah Abraham, Lal del Mundo. You know, again, I said Leilani again, but I also want to give a special thanks to Arts and Culture Commission, Nancy Rodriguez, Elizabeth Miss Pinosa, Dory Paninsa, of course, Joe and Joe Boston and my wife, Arlene. While I had extreme fear of missing out, FOMO, we were in Chicago and, you know, my wife was still working on the phone and text messaging and making sure everything was all aligned in terms from the artists that were here to all the volunteers, to the artists that presented their new work here in City Hall. And all the people that came out. I feel like I missed out on a family reunion. I've seen everybody that came up. I even had friends of mine that came up from Southern California. And they're like, "Where are you at, Rod?" I'm like, "I'm in Chicago, sorry. Family comes first." So I just want to thank them for putting in the time and effort and the love to shine some light on Daly City. So after that, so are there any city council reports? Okay, so I believe there were some technical difficulties with our public comment. And I would like to go back and I know these, some of these folks have been on for a while and now they got their hands up. If we can open up public comment. Would that be okay, Rose? Yeah, okay. Okay, so Leilani, if you can provide some access for our public comments.
No problem, Mayor. Looks like we have three hands with the last called Speaker of Cheryl. For Speaker, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm just, um, just want to bring this to all of you, that especially to Councilwoman Pamela Di Giovanni. Why are you using the city car for campaigning purposes and with all your errands? And everyone is having a endorse to the high gas price. Can you answer my questions? Why are you using the city car, which is, that's not they can, it can be used by personal matters, especially for campaigns? Do you think it's so unfair to everyone? You know, this is not the first time that I want to bring this to all of you for your attentions, but this is gone crazy, using a city car, that which is we are paying our taxes or removing one of our taxes. One, Pamela is using a city car that's supposed to be not being used for a personal matter, especially campaign. And right now, we are all complaining about indoors of high gas prices. But for your own, for your own, it seems like for your own purposes, on your own personal things, for Pamela Di Giovanni, it's not fair. It's not fair because you're using the city car for campaigning purposes and personal errands. I just want to bring that to you, to all of you who are in Daly City offices, and it's not fair for everyone. You have a guts to use the city car, which is we are who are working hard in Daly City, paying taxes, and you are using it for personal matters.
Your two minutes have been reached. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Fernando.
Ah, yes, hi. I actually want to yield my two minutes to Cheryl first, and then I would like to comment after. Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Catwar. I actually sent in a letter of complaint today before four P M., but I will read it now. This letter of complaint is regarding Councilwoman Pamela Di Giovanni. To whom it may concern, I'm writing to make a formal complaint of harassment by Councilwoman Pamela Di Giovanni. There have been other instances of her harassment towards me, but I would like to focus on the Jokoi event at City Hall on July twenty-second. I was on the guest list and was wearing the VIP bracelet given at the entrance door. I was walking by the rotunda outside the roped area towards the city clerk office. I was talking to city clerk staff Rebecca Isan to ask for an appointment. Councilwoman Di Giovanni was also there and overheard our conversation. She then walked towards a Daly City police officer and whispered something in his ear. The same police officer approached me and said, "Ma'am, you can't be here." It was Ms. Isan who replied to the police officer, telling him that I could stay because I was a candidate and I was currently doing business with her. The police officer acted based on what Ms. Di Giovanni said. It is abuse of power as an elected official. Afterwards, another police officer at the scene told me it was because I was her competition. I ask that you address this matter with Ms. Di Giovanni immediately. Please do not hesitate to contact me for more information if needed. I look forward to your response. Cheryl Catwar. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. And last, we have Fernando.
Uh, yes, thank you. So um, you know, I would have appreciated all of those kind words from Pamela Di Giovanni about the Alice Bulos ceremony, her warm words from the Jo Koy event. You know, all of those words would mean so much if it didn't um, really mean nothing. To me, they mean absolutely nothing because of her um, display of behavior, hostile behavior against uh, people like Cheryl, you know, a Pinay who rightfully has um, the right to run for office, who has the right to be in City Hall to do City Hall business. Um, I just really think that it's very disgusting that uh, a person like Ms. Di Giovanni would use her capabilities and her power as a councilwoman to um, be so hostile and so aggressive towards an opponent. You know, I really think that the city council and City Hall as a whole should really hold one of their colleagues accountable and show some kind of repercussions. Because if we let this kind of action, this misbehavior, this aggressiveness be um, to be out there and without any accountability, what kind of city are we running? Um, it's election season, people want to vote. And I really think that it's embarrassing for our city to let this happen. So I'm urging the mayor, the vice mayor and all the council members to please really um, bring this conversation to a level of some kind of accountability because you cannot let this run amok. You really can't, especially for someone who's a private citizen who has had the courage to run for office. It's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Leilani. Um, next up is item number 18. Are there any um, staff reports?
We do not have any additional reports tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, last but not least, um, we have a couple of adjournment and memories. Um, I'll start off with Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor. Um, although it hasn't been confirmed, but I feel the information I'm about to provide is quite reliable. I, it's with sadness, I have to report uh, the passing of former acting chief John Gemes. Also former captain with Daily City PD. His brother sustained a head injury to which uh, later turned out to be fatal. In the uh, coming weeks, uh, hopefully before the next council meeting, I would uh, provide additional information. So I would like to adjourn in memory of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Um, wow. Um, Vice Mayor Ray Buentura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, out of uh, very much respect for my uh, colleague Mike Ngona, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the passing of his mother, um, Connie Latrenko. Um, I just uh, found out about it just recently. And uh, I'm sure that um, Mike would appreciate your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time for him and his family. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, it is um, with great sadness um, to relay um, the passing of Carlos El Ramilo um, charity and Charles um, father. Um, and we just send deepest condolences to their entire family um, at this time.
I also want to adjourn a memory of um, a good friend of the commu- community, especially in the Filipino-American community. His name was Wendell Pasqual um, of Los Angeles. Um, as a youth growing up in Southern California, um, I wasn't exposed to ethnic studies until I was in high school. But it was through fashion that allowed me to start questioning and wanting to dive and explore for uh, my own history of Filipino-American experiences. And Wendell was a, one of the original, I would say Filipino conscious um, brand, Filipino-American conscious um, branding with his um, line called Downright Pinoy. And he passed away July 6th, 2022. And I'd, I'd like to just um, recite a a post from one of my friends, Emily Lawson, who is also a professor in Filipino-American Studies. And this is what she had to say. So she said, um, Wendell Pasqual, who passed away July 6th, 2022, after living with cancer. Wendell was the multi-talented, brilliant artist, father and organizer with a unique vision of sharing Filipino-American arts and history to beautify the global landscape. He and Mare Don Mabalon brought so many of us poets, musicians and artists together in Los Angeles and beyond in the 1990s through our path to fo- to follow spoken word, poetry and performance series, where he utilized his artistry, graphic design to produce the most amazing flyers and programs by hand. And he was also the founder and designer of Downright Pinoy, Downright Pinay. One of the first Filipino-American, Asian-American gear and clothing brands, our ethnic pride in the 1990s when he was just a struggling student. I learned so much about the healing power of music and design from Wendell. Um, he was also um, a designer, um, he had a um, a brand called Ethnics that came out as well. Um, I used to listen to him on, on the radio um, on uh, KPFA in, in Los Angeles, where he had um, this show called Asiatic Rhythms. And then in a young age, um, he passed away. And he was one of my contemporaries. Um, and I just want to provide um, my love and condolences to his family and to all those that have shared community, artistic and creative spaces with him. And so with that, I'd like to provide a moment, moment of silence. Oh, just go ahead, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
I'm, I'm, uh, uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, I, I'd like to add another adjournment, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's Letitia Fernando Laconte Cherry, who is a CEDN nurse. It is her um, grandma that had uh, passed away. So thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, this is a heavy one today. Um, so with that, let's provide a moment of silence for those that have passed. Um, thank you, everyone. Um, we won't see you, everybody, until September. Um.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more meeting.
Oh, sorry about that. We have one more meeting. Uh, so we'll see you at the next meeting. Jumping gun. Um, but I just want to say um, best wishes to everyone, everybody stay healthy and well. And we'll see you at the next meeting. Uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
We can stand on, we, we could stay on this link for the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Okay, so this is the Housing Development Finance Agency meeting, correct? Okay.
Correct, yes.
All right, so um, I just want to call order for the regular meeting for the Housing Development Finance Agency Agenda, or the meeting, uh, Monday, July 25th, 2022, pursuant to the Government Code, Section 54953E. Members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel on www.youtube.com backslash Daily City Video Meetings. The city's agenda website at www.wdailycity.org backslash agendas or on local channel 27 on Comcast. Um, so with that, I'd like to um, have a roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Okay. Um, we have a change of officers. Um, can I get a?
Read that into the record, uh, Mr. Mayor. The, the line that's there, it's already designated.
Got you. So um, the mayor of, of City of Daily City is hereby designated as chairperson and the vice mayor is hereby designated as vice chair, vice chairperson. Um, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, consent agenda, um, can I get a motion to um, approve the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, are there any public appearances?
In accordance with Brown Act laws, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment, we click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. No hands raised, mayor.
Thank you, Leilani. Um, so um, meeting adjourned?
Yep.
Thank you, everyone. Everybody have a good night. Bye.
Good night.